Yes.
Okay, open meeting to the public.
Karen Marisol, I'm part of the co-chair for the Fort de Julye Committee. We would like to ask the village to be able to hold in a charity event for us or a sponsorship event for us to raise some money. That will include also gathering toys for the community and a full community event where it's going to be a 1K run called the Stand Up Speedo Run. The reason why we're asking for support from the village is we are going to have to close off the street on Montgomery Street from Route 245 up to Montgomery. We have the fire department willing to be on board to do that, to support that, as well as having EMS on board, which I guess they others are, but they're aware that we would like to do this on December 11th, from about 11:00 to 2:00, and the closure would be for about an hour. So we have more questions, we can provide them afterwards, just hoping that that's something that can be supported.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
I read your proposal, and it sounds like you answered all my questions, so I'll put that in form of motion to support the Fort de Julye Committee. Peter, what?
I'll sign that.
Thank you very much.
All in favor? Come on.
Hi.
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 Hello, hello everyone?
We're still in open comment, so.
Okay, do we enter everyone or just me?
You both can come in.
Ah, come on.
I got some chairs here.
Thanks.
Yeah.
You got them too?
Here in the other. Campanet. Yeah.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, next person.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay.
I invited you here, so.
It's first time, so don't blame me.
Vanessa, introduce yourself.
Sorry for my English. Yeah, we are French, so, you know. So I'm working at Two Series I. Two Series I, it's a French-based company. So the HQ is in France, but it became in 2018 a public company and international company. So Two Series I became a group with, including six companies. The main, how to say? What we are doing actually is we are building servers, okay? IT servers, custom servers, high-performance computing. We bought another company, it's a UK company, they are building rugged PC. In general, these are used for, some of our customers is, and it's public, you can check that online, it's McDonald's, we have a, you know, like, the interface, you know, that is getting very hot. So this UK company, actually, they are building the PC in aluminium, you know, or copper. And they are working that, and we are providing the components, you know? And these screens are getting hot, and we actually provided the best product for them because everything is cool, you know? And they don't need to do maintenance like every day, just to give you an idea. Rolls-Royce is one of our customers, even the US Army, we have a project with them. It's for the military trucks, you know, because it's, you can, actually, I had a video, but I didn't bring my PC with me, so I'm sorry about that. But I can send to the mayor maybe a video about that, you can have it on the internet.
Feel like a post that for you?
Yeah, yeah, of course. So let's, let me get back to Two Series I. So we are building custom servers, high-performance computing servers. We have also some data centers in France, and we want to increase our data center service because we have, one of our customers, HRT, I don't know if you heard about that, Houston River HRT trading. So they want to move the data center from New York, because it's very expensive, they want to move it upstate New York, okay? We are working with them from, and one of our solutions is immersion servers, immersion, immersion tanks. This is actually, it's reducing with so much, the power consumption, the noise, you know, like, it's much better for the environment, okay? For example, here in the ex-Pfizer building, we have 20 tanks like that, and we want to install that. But everything is slow with the construction team, we don't have enough power because, yeah, I don't know where is the power. So these tanks, actually, are pretty easy to use, you know? The liquid is, it's not impacting, it's protecting the environment, what I'm saying. You can find everything online. The company who's making these tanks, they are our partners, it's called Submer, for example, and we are doing the IT, we are doing the service. And just going back to the project, the project is this HRT, want to invest couple of minutes and develop their data centers here, you know? So to do that, we need, of course, the building, we need power, we need manpower. Maybe I forgot, maybe I forgot, there are so many people here. Yeah, this is, this is one of our project, we have other customers, we have, we just met with the mayor today with one of our partner and customer too, that wants to invest too. We employed six people, I think, no, seven? Seven people. One is from Rosas Point, the other ones are from around here, Plattsburg, Chelsea, I don't remember, Champlain somewhere. Yeah, maybe I forgot a lot of things, but if you have any questions.
Are you going to be manufacturing anything in there?
Yes, yeah, I forgot that. Yeah, actually, we have a factory in San Jose, and the building, actually, they are increasing each year, they are increasing the rent, and California is becoming very expensive. And it's not only about the price, but it's also about the manpower, you know? And we want to develop more this region because it was ex-Pfizer, no one, yeah, there was a lot of people, now I'm sure that they are looking for. So we closed that factory at the end of this year, now actually in January, in January we are closing that factory, and we will let only an office for salespeople, and the factory, we want to move it here. We rented a part of the building here, but we are open to hear maybe other proposals, other buildings, if you want, buildings that we can have also IT, and also maybe, you know, like, production or manufacturing or assembly line or something like that. We have big projects with big names, I'm sure that if we bring, if we provide this service to HRT, I'm sure that these guys, they are bringing more people. And I think this is very good for this region, for the town, and yeah, I think, I think we can do good things, only good things. Questions?
Is that all in the Wyatt's building that are up now?
There are neighbors. I don't know what they are doing, I don't want to get into that, I'm not here to talk about others. But yeah, as I said, our main focus is IT, and yeah, you can look up on internet, we are building servers and not everything, not other things.
Are you using the buildings that are already there, or are you going to build buildings?
The idea with our partner that we met today is to build also a building, our own building, that would be nice. For now, you know, as it is a public company, we cannot, you know, like, spend a lot of things like uncontrollably, I can't say that. We have a council also, you know? Our boss, of course, owns more than 50%, so his decision is taken in consideration, but there is a council that we need, you know, so. So of course, when we invest into a, into a region, as we did here, because we invested already more than 1 million only in renovating and things like that, and also I'm not even going into the materials, into IT, into the servers that we have, that's more than like 20 million or something like that. So yeah, we would like to have our own building, yes, that's correct.
Are you the guys making the trailer-mounted servers?
No, we don't do the, we don't make the trailers. If a customer is coming and is asking for trailers or something like that, we do the IT inside, and maybe we do a partnership with someone who's doing the trailers. But we are building only servers and we are, you know, like, focusing on that. We don't want to.
Overstepping.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's a lot of companies moving in there, so some are building the trailers, you are building servers.
Yes, exactly.
How many people do you expect to employ?
As many as we can, if we move the production here. To be honest, I don't know how, like, how many, 10, 15, 20, I cannot give you a number now because I need to see what's the production, you know, like, we are building project by project, and if we close that building in San Jose in January, it's already signed, we are closing that already. So I think till the end of the year, we will have 10 people, till then, end of the next year, we will triple that.
So where are you in Chez-Z? Oh, Wyatt's building in Chez-Z too?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Employees from Chez-Z.
Oh, employees.
Yeah, yeah, there's one people from Chez-Z, one from Champlain, Plattsburg, yeah, and one from, only one from Rosas Point. I don't know if his father is here.
No, he lives next door to you. He lives next door to Wyatt, or Eris, or ERS, whatever.
No, Dylan?
Yes.
Oh, you know Dylan?
Ressing?
Grant, Grant, Grenon? Dylan Grenon?
Oh, okay.
You know him?
Yeah, the Grenon, Grenon.
Yeah, yeah, Grenon, yeah, yeah, he's working for us. Yeah, if you have, I don't know, if you have kids, sisters, we don't request, and that's great because we are training them, so we don't, they just need, you know, like, a basic knowledge and willingly to work. So if you have, if you know people, don't they say to send me, I will give you a visit card, don't they say to send me a resume? I don't know how many I bring you.
Could I have one of those, please?
Yeah, sure. I still have in my car, but I don't know, maybe. I have one, one more.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's my old, I was a project manager, now I took the management on, for the Canada subsidiary. Yeah, sorry, my French.
That's very good, thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
Not yet, I don't get hold, you know?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, the phone number is a French number, I have a US, but I didn't add it, you can send me an email anytime.
How is your electric consumption, going to be a lot of consumption for electric?
You know, as the IT, it's using a lot of electricity, of course. The idea is that how do we use it, okay? I gave already an example to the mayor today, and I will give you the same example. One of our customers in France, they were buying Dell, I don't know if you know Dell, yeah, it's pretty now. Yeah, yeah, servers. So they were buying Dell servers for the Paris Data Center, and we came with a solution based on the Facebook data center. The Facebook data center, they made their own, how to say, infrastructure, the racks, you know, the cabinet racks, it's called. They made because they wanted, they have thousands, like 10, 10 of thousands around the world, you know? So for them, for Facebook, it's very important to reduce the power consumption, to reduce the manpower, to reduce, sorry, the maintenance on the servers, that's very important, you know? And we took the same example of that, it's open, it's called Open Compute Project, OCB, and we took the same, we changed a little bit because we, everything is open, and we adapted our servers to it, you know? So everything, the power, the fan, everything is shared. So the customer came back after one month of using our solution, and he said he reduced up to 30% his capex. So that means everything, you know, he paid less, you know, of 30% of the invoice at the end. So that means less electricity, less, you know, like, what he's paying at the data center. So that's one of the examples. So what I'm saying is that, of course, we need a lot of electricity, but it's more important how you use it and what's the result at the end, you know? I don't know if it's answering your question, but yeah, especially that, you know, for air racks, it's called air racks, okay? You need, you need to cool that, you need air cooled, you need to bring maybe air conditioning or something like that, you know? For immersion, what we want to implement more and more, it's a tank, you know, it's a, it's a tank like that, and you put servers inside in a liquid that it's cooling, not con, not, it's like, it's like water, but it's not water, something like that, to cool the IT inside. So what is that? You don't need anymore air conditioning, you don't need, so that means, air conditioning means sound, okay, on the building, that means electricity, you know, because you need fans to cool and things like that, you need the rotation. So for the tanks, just, everything is reduced, everything is reduced, you know? And actually, we spoke about that, we have an entire floor R and D to implement the heat exchange. What's that? It's to recover the heat, you know, and to provide the heat, I don't know, to a house, to a building, to, we actually wanted to implement that for a hotel, but with COVID and things, you know, the hotels are not working very well. And so we went to, how it's called, Wheat, no, not Wheat. Le Froid.
Le Froid.
Well, Le Froid, everyone, someone speaks French?
Yes. Why is it?
It's.
Wheat.
Wheat?
Oh, drying wheat.
Yeah.
Drying hay.
Yeah, hay, yeah, yeah, hay, yeah.
It's also money, huh?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So actually, we have a project in Canada, and we are reusing the heat to heat the hays. Yeah. And we just had, this weekend, we had our boss with the customers, there's Hydro Quebec who's implicated, because it's one of their customers. So the idea is to install these tanks and recover the heat and heat the, the hays.
Yeah, hay.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Yeah, I'm, I hope this answers your question, I'm sorry about that, I went to.
I think I was kind of wondering how much power you're going to need to run the manufacturing facility.
So for the manufacturing facility, we don't need so much power, it's more for IT, but I, I cannot give you a number, I just need, maybe, maybe you give me a number and I can, you know, like, adapt to that, you know? With Wyatt, I heard that you're calling Wyatt's building, is that there is, there's the owner, okay, and there is other rents, other people who's renting the building, you know? So we need to divide, we need to, you know, like, shed the power. So yeah, that's why maybe, hopefully, the project with our partner can, you know, like, having our own building, that would be nice. Yeah, so I, if you have 20 mega, that's great, we are down to 20 mega.
Wyatt's was using what?
Probably 15 to 16 meg.
That'd have to be split between all the tenants there.
Fifteen or fifteen?
15, 15.
Yeah, 15 to 16 meg.
Oh, that's not a lot.
No.
The plans that I had, because my boss sent me a picture and he wanted to ask you about that, because there was, on the plan, it was written, the, all the power that is coming over there, apparently it was like four connections, two times 12 and two times seven. Was that correct or not?
No.
Okay, so the plan that we have are not good.
Well, maybe it was designed in a day for that, but.
It's old.
It's old. You have four feeders that you're talking about.
Yeah.
The max you could put on those feeders are almost, maybe three megawatts without melting something.
Okay.
Three times four, you're only talking at 12. If you're pushing for the max of four mags, that's 16, you're going to burn something out.
Yeah, three times four is not a lot.
No.
Okay.
I mean, people think there's a lot of power there, you know?
Yeah.
There is, I mean, there is, but there isn't, I mean, there was six feeders that used to feed the Pfizer facility, two went to Chempilot, the upper building, and four went to the lower parts.
Okay.
The lower parts, if you can get between 12 and 16 mags, you're doing good without melting something.
Okay.
But then you're, you know, then you have another, six mags up on the upper.
I mean, if you're talking 20 mags, we're probably going to have to sit down and.
At capacity.
Discuss upgrading the subscription at some point.
That can be a good idea.
Expensive.
Expensive too? Okay, if we, if we bring investors, that case, maybe it can be done?
No, that's what we said, we'll have to sit down and discuss what, you know, what can be done if you need that kind of power and New York State municipal is willing to give us that kind of power.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, we can, we can start, maybe.
Because we're going to have to look at doing updates anyway, because they've already done some executive order to ban new gas hookups, and New York State's going entirely to green energy, swapping over from propane, natural gas, all to electricity, and like some of the companies on the North End, they use propane heaters to dry their lumber. Well, when New York State decides to finally ban all that stuff, we can't really provide the power up there for them to run an electric kiln.
So they need to heat what? We can propose them, we can propose them a heat exchange.
For what they do.
If they have power, in that case, we can bring some tanks and they can heat their, what they need to heat.
They use lumber for what they manufacture. I know the company's name, I just don't know if I can say it necessarily, but they use lumber for what they manufacture, and they have to dry the lumber out in this heating system so that they can then make what they do.
Okay.
And they currently use propane, but if New York State decides to say, okay, that's it, it's 2030, no one's allowed to use propane anymore. We got problem.
Okay. What I can promise you is that as soon as we are finishing with the book, proof of concept in Canada to hit the, every time I forgot.
It's hay.
Hay. Thanks.
It's okay.
As soon as we are finishing that project, we can actually public all the, you know, like, the project and things like that, and maybe we can apply it to the local businesses who has, you know, like, there are so many buildings around here and with, I don't know, like, giving an example of what I heard from building, they have like six or seven megawatts, and they are using like, not even 10% of that. So why not, you know, like, investing into IT, because now everything is becoming, like, we have so many customers who's using IT for like research medical, you know, like, I cannot say that Pfizer is one of our customers, it's indirect, so maybe he, maybe they can, maybe, sorry, may, maybe even our servers served for the vaccine, I don't want to say that, because it's not a direct information, but, you know, like, for example, in France, we are doing, you know, like, the computing for the simulate, flight simulator, it's for a company in Group Dassault, I don't know if you've heard about Group Dassault. Actually, yeah, Benjamin is one of the main engineers who worked on that, you know? So we have big projects like that, with big names, Facebook is one of our partners, but no one knows that, no one knows about Two Series I, no one knows that we are doing, you know, like, very hype, and we are selling our servers to everyone, you know? So yeah, that's why, and thanks to the mayor that they invited us and, you know, explained what we are doing and we, and who we are, you know? I don't want that you get bad ideas, because this region is, we know everyone. And yeah, actually, we want to do, we want to do a good thing, you know?
Yep. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you. If you have any other questions, sorry.
Now, you're saying, um, you're limited on your power that you're using. Um, uh, it's not metered, it's, the problem is, is the three buildings that are there are on one meter. So it's how they divide it up is, that's the way these feeders used to feed the old Pfizer facility. Each feeder was on one meter, so it's not like you're gonna be, they need to do an overhaul of the electric system up there and figure out who needs what and how do we design it to this area? Because it wasn't designed, it's designed for a manufacturer like Pfizer that was one entity, one unit.
Mm-hmm.
And now there's all different entities going in there and how they divide that bill up. I mean, we send the bill out to.
ERS.
ERS, and they pay the bill.
Yeah, yeah.
And how it's divided, it's how it's divided up.
We are paying the bill.
Right. How it's divided up, we don't know.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
At this moment, we are paying the bill for the entire building, just just to give you an idea. Uh, there are other, uh, people inside the building. Um, we still need to figure out that. Um, I I don't want to get into details about that. Um.
What needs to be an overall evaluation of of usage and who needs what and how it can be delivered.
Yeah, and, oh, yeah, if it's one meter and one connection, it can be, uh, it can be a little bit problematic, uh, for us. And that's why the idea of a new building is actually more m- more attractive for us. Uh, because we need for the HRT group, uh, the Houston, uh, Hudson, sorry, Hudson River Trading, uh, they are more interested in to having, you know, like, uh, all redundancy. Because they want to move from New York here, and that's that's actually great, you know, for everyone. We are providing servers and, you know, like, you are providing the town with the power. And, uh, I know power is, it's you who manages that, you know? So I, we visited some buildings, um, we can actually visit more, um, maybe some terrain with our partners, with our investors, maybe, uh, we can build something, you know, but to do that, we need to be assured that we have the necessary power, you know? So if we if we have ten, if we have twenty mega, if we are sure that we have that, okay, let's go. We built that, uh, building in three man, in three months. Uh, we have everything, we have, we, I bring the IT guys, you know? And, uh, we have our own building, we don't depend on, uh, anymore on the uh, on the white, uh, almost, yeah.
Well, um, like I said, when Pfizer was there, there were six connections, six feeders. And that's what's available that is headed toward the Pfizer property. Um, right now, you're using one. There's one, the other.
So there are still five available?
The five were decommissioned and they're sitting there idle. So.
So they can be, they can be recommissioned?
It can be recommissioned, yeah.
That's great.
But a plan has to be wrapped forward.
Okay.
And, um, we need to figure out.
Need to sit down and.
Some directions, yeah.
Yeah, sure, sure. Okay, I'm available, I can, I can bring my boss here. Uh, he's a one hun- one thousand percent French, so he's English. No, no, it's okay, he speaks very good English. We are just making fun because.
Well, it's on camera, so.
Yeah, hopefully. Um, there is someone from, uh, the fire department?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay, i- it's good for, um, for the, um, Christmas lights.
Okay.
Okay, um, I don't know, if you have any other questions?
No.
No?
So, yeah, I'm I'm sorry for.
No, that's okay.
I didn't, I never was interviewed for so many people, so.
It's a bit, it's, it's a bit different, because I imagine like, I don't know if you could, because you're from France originally.
No, actually, I'm originally from Romania.
You're from Romania.
Yeah, but I moved to France like sixteen years ago. Yeah, so that's why I still, I, that's why I speak so very good English.
I'm not sure how it's, how public meetings are, if they're even done in France or Romania at this level.
Um, there are some, there are some, but, uh, like, a lot of things, they are private, so, uh, you know, like, smaller meeting or something like that. Um, I actually will be moving to, uh, to Canada. Um, as I said, I'm, I'm, um, I'm managing the, the Canada, Canadian subsidiary for Suresai, but also managing, uh, the people here, you know? So, uh, I'm doing that from distance, but I will be here at least two days per week. So if some someone, uh, wants to contact me, uh, anytime, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you.
Yes.
Um, just wanted to, um, do you have an email address? Uh, my 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 boss actually wanted to send you some, uh.
Okay, um, I don't have a business card, it's just mayor.
Okay, uh, you already have my business card, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I can just send you an email on that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you do you still need us or we can leave?
You can go if you want, or you can stay and see how this works, but.
Very boring.
Oh, it's very boring? No, I'm, actually, we we are going back because we are sleeping in, uh, in my house in Montreal.
Oh, okay.
And my house, it's it's a rented house, but, uh, sorry. Uh, so, yeah, we are going back, uh, if you if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming and you informed me, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Am I, it's boring?
Have a safe trip.
Boring, you have any?
Thank you.
Bye.
Any other public comments? I'll just bring it up next to that. Okay, moving out of the public comment session, minutes of the previous meeting.
Make a motion to be accepted as printed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, of course, oh, bills. Any questions or modifications to the bills today?
Well, there was a supplemental listing in your mailbox, all of the mailboxes that were.
Make a motion to pay the bills and supplemental bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No correspondence. There's a Congress of Correspondents today. Uh, Mr. Lattimore?
Yes, sir.
Uh, usually the clerk talks about the correspondence. All right. Okay, I'll take care of it. Um, Tri-Hank Construction Forgotten Project Is looking to replacing the sidewalk? Now doing repairs of the sidewalk. And this is, uh, on the corner of Maple and Pratt.
It's actually a light helping complete, a piece between the road and the sidewalk.
Correct. And that's being taken care of without him?
Yes, I have talked to Adam and, uh, they're planning on getting the repair of the sidewalk on a nice day this week as well as doing the the paving between the sidewalk and and the street.
How many of these emails are actually correspondence and or just FYIs? For which one? Because that was the Tri-Hank Construction, the paving is an FYI kind of thing. We got the Fourth of July Committee, Santa Steed Run Walk, but we've already approved that.
Yeah, the hydro energy.
The mask requirement? What requirement? The mask requirement. Currently, we're just keeping the mask requirement in place because we don't have an effective way of releasing that. Because we don't have anyone to really check people's, whether they've got their immunization card or not, so that's staying in place. And that will stay in place until the number of COVID nineteen cases in Clinton County decreases, at which point we can review again. We have a request from a group in St. Albans that would like to use our fields for soccer camp in next July. Uh, they typically, they typically host it at the high school, but.
There's a lot going on right now.
Yeah, there's a lot going on right now. I don't know if I want to read this word for words. I don't, I know we don't ever.
I would just make a motion to approve them to use our soccer field.
Yeah, like, because there's no, uh, there's no conflicts or anything with anything you've got scheduled.
No, and it's only four days. It's from July fifth through July eighth next summer.
Yep.
And they're gonna pay us whatever, ten dollars a head for.
Ten dollars per person.
Per person that they get in the soccer camp. It's a voltage camp that's been run at the high school for many years.
I'll second that motion.
The only thing I would add is, I'm assuming, I mean, I know a little bit about voltage and stuff, so I'm assuming they have like insurance and stuff. We just make sure they have some insurance in place, naming the village as an additional insurer.
In in the requirements, uh, Mr. Mernane, they will have to preside, present the village with proper proof of insurance. And also, um, a harm with an identified village for claims as well.
Okay.
So that's part of the contract.
Okay, perfect.
Motion made, second.
I make a mo- uh, I make a mo- uh, motion that they can use the field.
We already did that.
Oh.
You already did that?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Firm Hydro Energy, December first to thirty first. There will be no reduction in firm hydro energy sales to our hydropower customers for the period of December first to thirty first, twenty twenty one. The forecast in December twenty twenty one, hydro generation bids projected to be sufficient to meet our firm's hydropower customers' needs. However, if that generation is not sufficient, substitute engine will be purchased on your behalf for those customers with signed substitute engine agreements. Uh, current estimate, so no shortage for January twenty twenty two through June twenty twenty two. And I'll continue to analyze current data monthly and provide this type of rolling six on forecast each month. Since we have our hydropower agree, uh, agreement, because I was asked to talk about this when it comes to heating, the electric rate should be in line with what they were last year roughly. So unlike other places that have a lot of fossil fuels used to heat the buildings and with the shutting down of those pipelines, we shouldn't have such a big issue for most of our, for most residents in the village. Some residents are still using oil-fired furnaces. And I would, I did get a request from one to convert. But, yeah, so the electric customer should be fine for this year. It should be in line with last year. I'm not used to having so many papers.
Correspondence from the library.
Yep, there's correspondence from the library, uh, oh, yes, okay, this is, uh, something I need to do. The Dodge Memorial Library Board of Trustees would like to submit the name of Laura or Bert Sisson.
Sisson.
Sisson?
Yeah.
Yeah. For appointment to fill a vacant library board position, term of office, April twenty twenty one, twenty twenty six. Library Board of Trustees voted to approve Ms. Bert Sisson for the position of the board at at its November tenth, twenty twenty one meeting. I make a motion with Hoover.
Second.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we've got a letter from Tim Brazey. He's the CEO of Landmark Divided. Company buys ground leases for cellular, uh, cellular towers and rooftop antennas. They are apparently interested in the seller lease on our property. If your site meets the criteria, they're interested in buying your seller lease for a significant cash payment. This is just marketing call. And these usually get filed under file thirteen. Yeah. So this is forty-three Chapman Street. KAS is happy to assist with pre- demolition asbestos inspection. We can assist you through the next steps as needed. Uh, Cooper?
Yep.
Because this is, your name's on this email.
Yes, I just got that this afternoon at about two o'clock, I think it was, or something like that, but, uh, the contractor says he, he wants to go forward, but he, the owner doesn't have that best of abatement.
Okay.
I told him, wait to have proof of it, so I had him email that down to me today to show the board that, yes, he is working on getting it from K, K, uh, KAS, I guess. It's a, she brings up today, because, you know, I feel, uh, our people, they live on the left and the right of the forty-three over there. They've put about eight months of really a tough time there, but we're doing the best we can with it.
Yeah, good me.
And so all, and all that's needed at this point is this asbestos test?
What's that?
They have had asbestos surveyed on the property, so, yeah, exposing it as best as possible to the particular site.
You have to have that to issue the demo, the demo permit.
Demo permit, right. Um, KAS is probably the more, one of the more reputable companies in this area that does that. I've done, I've used them a number of times, especially not just asbestos, but also like for fuel storage, tankable bubbles and stuff like that. They're very good. They're, they're, they have an office in Plasper, but they're, I think they're also based in, um, I guess, Exjunction, but they're, so, but they're, the Plasper office is very good.
And this is like the last thing they need to get that permit to demolish it? So they've already got a company that's ready to do the demolition work?
Yes, back to the contractor's decision. As soon as he gets it at that, I issue the demo permit, he'll start, he's ready.
Excellent. How long do you think it'll take to get that?
It says two or three weeks.
It says two or three weeks, because they got, they gotta take the samples and they have to send them in and test it.
Yep.
Because that's the same thing we did, you know, we tore all the other places off around here. They've come out with that law, but, uh, ten years ago, and that's the way it's gotta be.
How long do you think it'll take to demolish that once all lets in range?
Two or three days.
Two or three days? Uh, is there a, is there a point in the season where it's too late or it doesn't matter?
No, it doesn't matter. It's just that now it's, I mean, you're getting into the snow and the weight is there, because it's all going to Shattagay. Uh, that's eighty, ninety dollars a ton to get it up there.
Or you gotta cut some trees to get in there, right?
Three trees you gotta come out. And, uh, there's a purchase agreement on the property in place, but I'm not going forward with it until this asbestos abatement is in place.
Okay, right. Yeah, you can't go forward until the asbestos testing.
Well, there's, there's, there's a couple of factors there. First, more than one percent, you're not gonna see me there. You're gonna see somebody that's, does the remediation work and that's not gonna be cheap.
Yeah.
They find one, less than one percent, but what's, what's in the village's favor is this thing's been open for the last eight months. The air's been getting to everything, so, and it's been raining in there, so chances are it's gonna be slim to none.
Good.
But who knows?
Testing will tell.
And if it's unsafe to get in, they just call it as a, has to be done by, you know, somebody that does remediation, so get ready for that bill. If you find less than one percent, we're okay.
Do you know what's involved in testing, how they take the samples or?
Well, they take and they've got these little jars, they got sniffers, and they go around with their sniffers. They find something hot, if it in the jar, they send it to the lab. They take tests through the house. Chances are, if there's any, it'd be in your linoleum and maybe in the pipes down cellar, but apparently it's all hardwood floors in there, so I hear.
I don't think the kitchen is up and up and down, if I remember, like, I used to work in that house a lot and I can't remember.
If there's any, it would be the cellar around the, the boiler, or, I wonder what kind of boiler they had in there before?
Yeah, there was none, none down there.
Oh, there you go, so. Oh, there you go. So chances are it's less than 1%, so it's less than 1%. It ain't gonna take long to get things done, but everything's time consuming. You're looking at three weeks before he even comes up here. You're looking at another, probably a couple of weeks, a good 10 days before you get the test back. So we're in January. And, you know, the equipment doesn't like to run good in, in cold weather.
Nothing likes to work in the cold.
Yep.
But this is good news, so all they need is that, which is still gonna take another couple of months, probably.
So John, you're gonna get back to him tomorrow and tell him to...
He's already, I already spoke to him twice today.
Okay, and he's gonna come up as, as soon as he can to?
Well, that's what the, that's what Dave said. They, they've signed a contract with him to do this, the job, so. According to Dave, no.
You can follow up with him, John. The guy from Plasper, his name's Aaron at KAS, he's kind of the chief guy, so.
Yeah, I met him before. We've done some other houses.
Just make sure he can expedite it, anything he can.
We've got a resolution here, Budget Modification Resolution 2021-27. This deals with Fire Department, equipment, and other... Or is the Board of Trustees deemed it advisable to make certain modifications to 2021 to 2022 village budget? Be it therefore resolved, the Treasurer is authorized and directed to make the following modifications to the village budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022. The resolution shall take effect immediately. The question of the foregoing was duly put to roll call vote by the mayor and seconded by Trustee Pelkey. Oh, I put the motion up? Yeah, okay. Uh, Trustee Arna?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Rodriguez is not here. Mayor votes aye. Okay, I had a question, request, oh, there's two things I did. I appoint Chris Lettermore to the remaining time on the clerk's position. So that he, he can take over for Susan and Sullivan on the remaining time of the clerk appointment. He'll be subject to reappointment, uh, the next organizational meeting for the next new term. Uh, Executive Session on Union Contract Negotiations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I already spoke about the heating costs that I wanted to talk about. Okay, uh, Trustee Arna? Uh, they got some windows over the library that are in dire need of replacement. And I brought Stephen the bombard over there from Cheesy Hardware. And he's gonna give you an estimate of how much it would cost to fix them. All the sill at the bottom is all rotted off, there're big holes in it. The wood rotted out? Wood rotted out at the bottom of the windows, so. So he's, he figures we don't have the replacement. One of them, he thinks we, we can just take out the window, but he said you're gonna have somebody that knows how to take them out, that don't break all the sill and stuff like that? Because if, if you do, then you gotta replace the hall window and stuff, so. He's just gonna replace, uh, just the window itself, the glass and the... And the rotten frame. Right, not the frame. Is this a historic building, so that in the future, in the future, if we wanted to completely replace the windows, the more energy efficient ones would be? More energy efficient is just that they were, uh, uh, clad on them, uh, vinyl clad. And you can't see it rot, I mean, you know? Oh, they put vinyl cladding over the wood? Right. So the wood's rotting under that? Yep. And they didn't replace, it was, uh, I think it was 90, 96 on, on the little emblem on the window, I think it was? 1996? Yeah. Jules Trainau did that, when he did the upstairs, cut the floor in upstairs and in the attic and stuff. They might actually wanna look into replacing those windows again, because it's been almost 30 years, so. You'll, you'll, you'll give me a price of, of the two that's rotted out and stuff like that, so I'll have that for next meeting. Okay? Yeah. And what about the trees on the lake? What are we gonna do with them? Are we talking about the ones south of the pier, or these different trees? Yep, south of the pier. Because the ones... The ones behind the village office. The ones behind the village office were, were cut down last year, but grew back up again. Yeah? The ones south of the pier on that turn were removed and cut down? Those willow tree type, type ones there? Yep, those were removed. If you pull them out, they wouldn't grow back? But they already growing back? Growing back, yeah. They're up, uh, must be E-I. I'm not sure we're talking about the same trees. Right across the Deligars, uh, driveway. Right across the Deligars driveway. Sportsman's Pier? From the gazebo over towards the sports. Okay. Okay, that's looking at the gazebo, the pier going towards Lake Street? No. No. The opposite way. The opposite way, okay. Yeah. Over side, yeah? Yep. And also, I'd like to ask Mr. Hoover about the... Place on Pratt Street? How is that coming?
The place on Prasfer, which are we referring to?
The one with the power?
Although I, I still haven't heard from Tom. He's supposed to let me know about checking our own power status to, so we, so we can establish the fact that he's actually using that for, what he's using it for. We already got a statement from the police department of what's going on there, but we, we were supposed to get something, get back to me, uh, after the last meeting. I haven't heard anything from anybody yet.
Okay, I followed up with the property owner, um, instead of a follow-up letter, I don't believe I heard from him, so I'm gonna have to do that again to check on it. And or necessary obviously prepare violation of that, but I did send a follow-up letter.
Okay, that's all I have for now? What about Chapman? Yeah, we just talked about that. No, Pratt, I saw Pratt Street and Chapman. I only heard one. Trustee Menard?
My first thing is, uh, I just wanna update everybody. They started putting the poles in for the fence for the dog park. It looks, starting to look good. I'd like to thank the village workers for that, and continue to do a good job. Um, and I'd like to request an executive session for, to discuss an electric customer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have, please.
Uh, Trustee Pelkey?
Yes, uh, the Fire Department is not having their Christmas party for the kids. Uh, because of Clinton County being a red zone for COVID. But we are gonna do, uh, like a meet the Santa, we're gonna bring Santa around on the fire truck to different locations where people can sign up. And we're gonna bring, um, like a hundred stockings with gifts and...
Candy.
Candy. And we're gonna go door to door. The elves are gonna deliver these hundred, for the first hundred kids, um, in the route, throughout the village. So we won't have, uh, we'll be outdoors, and we don't have to worry about being in close quarters and having contact with COVID. We talked about, we still wanna do the parade of lights like we did last year. That went very well. The residents of the village, I think, really appreciated it, so we are gonna continue talking about that. And we want to go forward and, uh, and keep that going every year. I do wanna talk about the annual parade of toys that the village has. We're in the same predicament here with, you know, with being a red zone of the COVID. Uh, we canceled it last year. I think because of our numbers are so high this year, we should reconsider canceling the meeting this year. And support the Fire Department with what they're doing. It's, it's how you guys feel, but that's, I think it needs to be brought up. There's no sense of passing out hot chocolates and cookies to kids and having, having everybody touch them.
No.
No.
I mean, if our numbers were way down, it'd be different. Now masks are required. I think we should wait another year.
Yep.
Yeah.
Also, that parade, that parade of lights or whatever we're having on the fire trucks, that's December 18th.
Uh, the 18th is, is the Santa Claus is to go out and bring the gifts to the children throughout the village on the 18th. We're gonna find out, we're gonna let people know how to get on the list to be the first hundred. Because not everybody's on Facebook, so I wanna get like a physical number for Heather, Heather Savage, the chairperson of, from our Fire Department, that, that volunteered to take this project on. And we will get with her, myself, Benny, and we will find out a number where you could call to sign up also.
Yeah. So you're gonna put a, a package out on Facebook, I guess?
Right, but not everybody's on Facebook, that's the thing.
Right.
And need to put a sign on, on the Fire Department?
Yeah, or on the sign here.
Right, or use our sign.
Yeah, use our sign with the numbers of the first hundred kids. And, and if there's more, I'm sure we'll buy more and... Because we're just gonna bring Santa Claus out, so he can wave to the people, and the elves will deliver the, the packages to the residents that have the gift.
Right.
And that is on December 18th. But the parade of lights is to be determined. We don't know what day it's gonna be. I think more is, uh, December 5th. So Mike was picking around some dates, so we are, we're looking forward to do that again.
Yep, that was very nice.
And that's all I have.
Do you make a motion for the parade of lights to cancel?
Oh, yes. I'll make a motion to cancel that. I'll second that one. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I will have, ask for one executive session to talk about a particular person, employment history of a particular person.
The seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Trustee Rodriguez is not here. Any other reports? Okay, um, I've actually got a couple of things, too. The Christmas train, Canadian Pacific Christmas train was canceled. Canadian Pacific sent us an, sent me an email saying that was canceled this year. They're doing an online concert again. And, um, thing that was going on this morning, uh, because the guy from France, from 2CRSI, mentioned the company, the project they're doing over, that they invited me to the meeting. Uh, Joe Church is setting up the company in one of the pod buildings. And, um, this is a company, because the writer A for the NIPA agreement we have for the hydro, his company doesn't qualify for any economic grants or economic programs. So we can, using this writer A in this agreement to our hydro allotment, we can bill him like a down payment type thing, so we can have a study done, so that we can safely provide him with power. Did you get this, writer, Tom?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay, I'll have to send you this. So with this program, we can actually ask him to pay for the PLM study to our, the condition of our electric grid. And then he, and then that can see as part of what his requirements are for his power, then we can see if we can safely provide the power that he needs up there. And I think we could use this as a way to, because we have to do something for the north end, because of, once all this green energy thing New York State is doing, we can't actually provide enough power up there with the current infrastructure. This way, we can get them, get someone to pay for not only the grid assessment for the entire village, but also get us a plan and a study done to see how we can expand the power supply up in the north end, so that the companies up there can continue operating once they're not allowed to use propane or any other form of natural gas or fossil fuel anymore. Because it's only, when I asked Jason, he did the calculations, there's only a megawatt that's available, not even. And once everything has to go over from propane, natural gas, well, there's no natural gas up there, but once they have to start feeding their buildings electricity, running their dryers on electricity only, that's gonna be a bigger than a one megawatt load, and that's gonna overrun that, the infrastructure up there. I'm seriously concerned about it. So this way, he would be required to do the energy study to show that it can be safely provided to him. If it can't be safely provided, how it can be done so it's safely provided, you'd have to pay for the upgrades. And then that way, we can get everything set up for the north end, for the New York State's eventual, by like 2050, banning of everything that's fossil fuel powered. And with the study done for the village power grid to begin with, because they're also gonna be banning the sales of new gas-powered cars, they're gonna make it mandatory that everybody has electric cars. Those are the only cars that you're gonna be able to buy in New York State. And then we, we need to assess the village's electric grid's capability, notwithstanding everybody plugging their cars in at the end of the day. And New York State's doing nuts. They're going away to California, but we have to look at this stuff to prepare for it. Because imagine, there's a car charging station outside the village office, but imagine that in everyone's house.
Do you have a, an email or something you could send us on what, what the business is going over?
So far, it's just under Joe Church's name. Because Joe Church is setting everything up himself, so it's just Joe Church currently. He doesn't have a business name yet. He's up here, and he knows about this, because I've sent him the rider to the contract. I've sent him the form that was required that comes with the, with the rider. And so he's doing that part. We're gonna have to talk to, like, Tony Bedaubry and a few other people to figure out exactly how to implement this. But we can also work with Plasper.
Don't we need to say there's a contract? A contract for what?
Oh, it's a, it's a, it's not really a contract. It, well, it's an agreement, so it's kind of the contract. There's a form they have to write out for an application in order to start the process.
An agreement for what?
Application for high-density load service customer information. They provide us the customer information, what they're looking for. And then from there, based on their demand, on what they're looking for, we can give them, like, you're gonna have to pay this amount upfront for the study and everything.
Where, where is Joe Church looking to go?
He's looking to go into one of the pod buildings.
And we don't know what kind of business he's?
It is a tech company. He is working alongside with 2CRSI. They're gonna be using their, their system to help serve, serve some of their customers up there. Uh, they'd be going into that building, they'd be using the residual heat from the equipment to heat the building, so that way the pod can transfer from the propane boiler system they have now and use electric instead, using waste heat from the computer equipment.
This writer A that they talked about was passed by the New York Municipal Power Agency. It was petitioned from the PSC. So if you have a high-density load, you can charge them the full supplemental rate. They don't get any hydropower. The hydropower is left to the residents. So if any high-density load, if it's, uh, 2CRSI, if they're saying they have a high-density load, they should not be getting hydropower. They should be filling out an application, and they would pay the full supplemental power, so it protects our residents.
There's an exception to this. Applicability, AC does not qualify for New York Power Authority Municipal Road Cooperative Economic Development Program, which 2CRSI does.
They are an economic development program?
Yeah, because... Yeah, because Clinton County I D A adopted that.
Joe Church's company does not. And he would be a high density service.
So what's going to separate the high density service from the ones that aren't, that go into the Pfizer facility?
It is literally just the New York municipal, uh, New York Power Authority Municipal Rural Cooperative Economic Development. Companies that, that apply, that qualify for that, even if they're high density, they do not fall under this rider A.
So is that all the Pfizer property?
Not necessarily. Some tenants inside may fall under this still. Cause it could be entirely possible another tenant decides to move in there that does not meet that requirement.
Out of curiosity, how many tenants are currently in the Pfizer building?
Two at least. Cause as, as they mentioned when I asked them if they manufacture those server trailers ever talked about before? They do the server side. They don't manufacture trailers. Another company that's been trailers.
Like, as you, as everyone remembers at the last meeting, um, when that came up as an issue regarding what was happening up on that property, I actually spoke to somebody at Triangle Electric. They called me the next day after they called Mr. Cooper. And I explained to him that we had very little detail about what was happening and we need much more information than to be able to review a building from there. I think I shared some of the emails with some of you and if I didn't, I apologize. But within, I was told by the gentleman at Triangle Electric I was speaking with that, that they would give me that additional information. But within a couple of days, I started getting, I got an email from Harry Archer? Yeah, Harry Archer ten?
Yeah.
Who basically said, uh, that basically they're gonna throw an application and then we, we would have within a few weeks. You know, it says the detailed plan is focused on job creation, next gen tech. So I says, great, thank you very much. I did get like a colored picture of like, we couldn't really read too much about what was on the last one. And it shows like the location of these trailers and stuff, which you couldn't read on what we had last time, so. I, I have not received anything further from that. So at any rate, um, when we, when I do, I will share with the board and we'll see what they come up with, but essentially right now, whatever they're doing is kind of on hold and I don't know what the it sounds like there may have been some issue between Triangle and them, but I don't know. So we'll see when we get that additional information.
And so Joe Church has the application for, he's filling it out for what he's doing at the north end. And my suggestion would be to charge him like a fifty thousand dollar sort of down payment to pay for the PLM study, which would have, would have to add onto the PLM study and additional things so they can study, uh, study how we can safely deliver power up there if we need another substation on the north end or how, and how we go about doing that. But that would be when the application comes in.
Just out of curiosity, only cause I don't know the answer to this, who does that study?
That safety study and the electric grid study? That's PLM.
Yeah, and that's where you use the ports and all that stuff.
That's who we hire.
Yeah, and this way, instead of us having to pay for it and split up in two, two years, cause a forty thousand dollar study, we can have this company pay for it and we can get it done in one year. Within one year. We have to figure out, cause this is a new process for us, but we have to, and we have to figure out how to go about it. But we've got a resource in Plattsburg, cause they use it, and we've got NIMPO that we can talk to. We've got resources to figure this out and get through it. Open meeting of the public again? Yep.
I have a problem between my sidewalk and the road, okay? It's very low in there. And whenever, when you back out, it's slow. But the problem is, it's cracked. All, all of the, the stuff is cracked and, you know, it's cracked all the way through. When the, when the spring of the year comes, the water comes down and not only lays back there and then it's freezing, and I have nothing but an ice gate there, but it's also going over about another five feet or so, and it goes right down underneath and below the transformer. A lot of it goes down in there. What I'd like to see you do is, the village to do is to bring it up high enough in, on, on, between the transformer and my, and my sidewalk. If worst comes to worst, dig down deep enough, put some kind of a, of a collector that when the water comes down, it'll go down in there and eventually it'll go down away from the transformer also. Cause it's going right to the bottom of that transformer. Been doing that for two, three years.
This is right across from your place across the street from.
Right, right straight across the street from the beautiful place that you're talking about, you don't care now.
All right, then, it's across the street from the beautiful place we're tearing down.
Yeah. Hopefully. And of course, it's wide because it's a big two garage area, you know, unfortunately it's. And see, the road is a lot higher there to begin with, so that's where the problem is.
So the problem is between the road and the sidewalk. The sidewalk is higher, the road is higher and the ground there is sunk down.
Yeah, yeah. The sidewalk is higher. If it's down, it comes through, from the sidewalk down and the road is higher. It's a high spot there and that road is.
I wonder if there's a storm drain that's nearby.
Yeah, if you could put a good storm drain. Especially in the spring, you know, when it gets, starts to melting a lot and it's cold at night or whatnot. There's nothing but a skating rink down in there. Sometimes the ice will go three, four inches thick all the way across there. So I'm out there trying to cut that up. If somebody comes, somebody comes in someday, makes a quick turn, they're gonna take that telephone pole right down. People slide around a little bit. I won't, cause I know it's there, but if anybody else does, I'm, I'm.
Does the ice, ice show up in the road or is that just in that grassy area between the road and sidewalk?
Pardon?
Is the ice in the road or is it just in the grassy area between the road and?
No, no, no. It's, it's right at the bottom. And it doesn't go to the road because what I do is I don't let it go in the road. I get out there and I, I don't know, I'm out pulling it. If I push it down, I get it out of the way, you know? I push it actually toward the transformer and then some of it's, it's a little bit down there, but I don't think that's a good idea to have that. I know all the wiring and all is protected, you know, I mean, it's all in, it's all in P C V and all, you know, whatever, you know? So you don't have, we don't, that's not too serious a situation, but it could be a situation where the village could be in a lot of problems there. I don't know if it would short out or not. Light it, light it on, you know?
There's rather a dozen regardless. Any other comments from the public?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Resess.
Yeah, motion to recess. Getting anything? Don't think so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.